All right, welcome. We start the session at 6:35. And if we could begin with Lieutenant Heskey.
Join me, please, if you will. God, we're grateful for the opportunity to come together tonight as well. Many blessings have already transpired this day. And for the express purpose to pray for our city council, grateful for these men and women who serve this community. And again, be reminded how blessed we are through the opportunities to enjoy one another as friends and neighbors and all the amenities that we have been blessed with. And so as they deliberate on the decisions that need to be made and as a report, we trust that it would be continually for the betterment of our community. And again, for the tremendous guidance and direction they give to us, we offer our thanks. We would pray these things in your name. Amen.
And Lieutenant Heskey, would you please raise your five tools?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get a roll call?
Councilmember Bonner.
Here.
Councilmember Eric Krantz. Councilmember Hagerty. Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Here.
Mayor Warren.
Here.
Need to approve the agenda, are there any changes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there's one change, one addition we'd like to add under, it would be 5.4 under presentations. We will have an update on public safety, we'll have an update from the Sheriff's Department, and one from fire.
Can I get a motion?
I move second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All against? And it passes. Special presentations? Oh, I don't see Bena here. Oh, Chamber of Commerce? Ma'am? I know. No info, I'm sorry, we'll just pass by, he missed his chance. We were going to do a student of the month, that is also another agenda change, we're going to be doing that in July because she's actually student of the year, sorry, she's graduating tonight. So she had other things to do, she couldn't be with us, silly girl. Next up is 5.3 presentation by Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District. Bonnie Woodrow.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman and Mayor. First, I would like to bring up and introduce our Director Horton, and she has a few words to say before I start on the presentation.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. I've been, I've now done this presentation three times, I should be getting a little bit better at it. Not every district has a variable sewer rate structure. We had one flat rate for sewer for many, many years. And it's not a requirement of the state for us to charge for the true cost of the writing service. But over the years, people would say to me, "Well, you know, I'm one person in my house and next door there are six people, and we're paying the same flat rate for sewer, it doesn't seem right." So we began to work with our consultant over almost a year to find a rate structure that would be fair to everybody, which would reflect the true cost of providing service for sewer. And as a public service provider, remember that EVW D can only charge what the costs associated with providing service to its customers, we're not for profit. It's critical that we continue to make investments towards our infrastructure to replace and repair sewer pipelines and to maintain a reliable and safe sewer service. It's our continued commitment to transparency. We reviewed the sewer rate structure very carefully for a long time, and we chose what we think is a fair structure. The board did its due diligence, staff logged in major, major hours responding to our questions, and so many of our questions were answered at meetings. I should point out as well the importance of investing in our infrastructure. EVW D has been awarded more than $27 million in grants over the last several years, some of them are low interest loans to offset the costs of projects to enhance water and sewer systems, reducing costs for our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Horton, and thank you for having us here this evening. We appreciate the time to share this information with you and your city. So as Director Horton mentioned, we are looking at a variable sewer rate change beginning on July 1st. With me, sorry, a little sensitive. So with me this evening is Christina Henry, who is our Community Relations Manager, and I'm Bonnie Woodrow with our Community Affairs Department. And this evening, I'm sorry that our Assistant General Manager wasn't able to join us, he was feeling a little under the weather, but we'll be happy to assist you or answer any questions that you have at the end of this presentation. So just to give you a little background, the EVW D Board of Directors met with staff about a year and a half ago and wanted to discuss how we can continue to keep our high-quality service now and into the future, but maintain that at a reasonable rate, want to be sure it was was fair for our customers. So we worked with an independent consultant to do a rate study, and over the course of about six months, the rate study was developed, and as Director Horton mentioned, it was brought to the board and discussed, and we looked at the financial responsibilities, the operating and maintenance costs, as well as ensuring that we had significant sufficient funding for our capital needs. And also, as Director Horton mentioned, we do pursue grants, so we received $27 million in grants and low interest loans over the past four years to offset some of those costs. So that went into into play. And then when all was said and done, and the board had a product that they felt was reasonable and and fair, they shared that with the public in a public hearing notice, which we did last June. And it was, we had a public hearing on July 27th of 2017 where those rates were approved. Now we're currently letting customers know, we're reaching out through mail, through presentations, through social media, et cetera, and letting our customers know of the change, and those rates will go into effect on July 1st. So just to kind of give you an idea, our sewer rates are unique, based on many different factors. It varies from agency to agency. Something that's considerable within this area is our terrain and our geographic location, a very mountainous area. We have, when we're talking about sewer and and the homes within our service area, we have three treatment plants, and we have a 96-square-mile area. So we need to be able to pump all of those eggshells and coffee grounds and anything else that we send down the sewer from homes to those three treatment plants. So we've got quite a bit of area that we cover. We also have to take into consideration that we are only 33% built out within our service area. So we have large swaths of land that are undeveloped. We still need to be able to service people on those far ends, ensure that their sewage gets to our treatment plant where it can be treated. So currently, EVW D has a fixed rate structure. It's made up of two pieces. It's got a systems cost. The systems cost would include operating the wastewater treatment plants, the routine maintenance, and repair and replacement of equipment. We also have the flows cost, this is the more variable cost, this is the piece that can can vary based on the number of people using the system. And that includes collecting and transporting of sewage to our plant, the chemicals to treat the water, make it fresh and clean, the disposal of all those coffee grounds and eggshells and everything else that comes down the sewer, because once we receive it, we have to turn around and dispose of that just as you would if you throw it in the trash can. And then we have to to make sure that water is is fresh and clean and ready for reuse, which we use as recycled water for irrigation and a supplement to Lake Elsinore. So what's changing? EVW D's variable sewer rate will now replace that one rate. So currently, we all pay $45.87 for our sewer rate. This new rate structure will be based on the number of people reported to live in the house. And the variable sewer rate more closely reflects the usage and impact on our system. So as we talked about, those flows that come in, the people, people using the system, the more we have using the system, the more impact it has and the greater the cost. So what are our variable sewer rates? So currently, as we mentioned, that postage stamp rate, $45.87, one rate. Now, beginning 2029, the new rate structure will be split into two pieces. The first is the fixed, that's the systems cost, the wastewater treatment plant, the infrastructure, the part that we all pay pay a piece of. And then the second component will be the variable, which is based on the number of people reported to live in the home. So the fixed cost is $20.29 per month for all customers, and then the variable is $6.93 per person, so each person living in the household. So for example, I made a little graphic to make it maybe a little easier to to visualize. We have our our character Elsinore Eddie, Elsinore Eddie has four people in his home. He has a variable sewer rate of $6.93 per person plus the fixed rate of $20.29. So his total sewer bill is now $48.01. That would be for a family of four. So how does EVW D measure what goes into the sewer? Well, our sewer is not metered, so we're not able to to calculate on a meter. But this variable sewer rate takes into account the waste that each home contributes to our sewer system. It's based on your indoor water budget and the number of people reported to live in your home. Okay, I'm throwing a lot of information at you all at once, now I'm talking about water budgets. So, to help you better understand the the calculation, every home receives 55 gallons per person per day for their water allocation inside, that's a state mandate. Every home in Elsinore Valley's Water District area is at four people, unless you've reported a higher number. If you've told us you have six, then you receive six people's worth of water. But if you have two people in the home, we don't have that calculation, we are at, we have everybody at four. With this new variable sewer rate, it's going, the 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 number of people in the household will affect that that sewer rate. So if we currently, everyone has four people in the home, they receive an allotment of water, and then that water in turn is is the impact on the system. So to to better describe this, we have a little visual graphic. Currently, indoor allocation is nine units of water, that's four people at 55 gallons per person per day. You also receive an outdoor allocation that's based on the square footage irrigated area of your home. And your total allocation would be the two buckets at the top. If you report that there are two people within the home to us, your water allocation will decrease a little bit to four and a half units, because now you have half the number of people in your home. Your outdoor water budget will stay the same, so your outdoor water allocation will stay, your total water allocation will be slightly smaller with two people in the home, okay? So the the amount of people in the home has the impact on the system, and that's how we're we're showing that. So now, each home is different, and so we encourage any of your your citizens to give us a call or call our customer service, and they can assist customers with better understanding what their allocation will be. And just for an example, this evening, I've brought two bills to kind of give you a better idea, just to kind of give you a visual of what your bill will look like. So currently, if you have four, we have four persons in the home, your indoor water use is nine, you receive nine units indoors for your allocation, and you get the flat sewer charge of $45.87, so your total bill is $145.85. Beginning July 1st, you'll still receive at four persons per household nine units of water. And your your sewer rate is now in those two pieces, the fixed and the per person charge, so your total bill would be $151.56, so about a $6 difference in your bill. Now let's say you have two people in the home. Currently, you receive nine units of water, you have the flat fixed sewer rate of $45.87, and your total bill is $145.85. But beginning July 1st, you report to us that you have two people in the home, your water allocation is now at two persons' worth of four and a half units of water, and the sewer charge is split, again, your fixed rate is $20.29, but your per person charge is $13.86, so it's a little bit lower. And then your total bill would be $125.97, so there is a decrease as long as you're able to stay within your water budget. So we have to, we have sent over the, a flyer that was sent to our customers in the mail, I believe Stephanie put that in your packet this evening. We also have copies of that, it answers many of your frequently asked questions that you may have. Also, we have a website link dedicated to this information, so you can go online. We have a bill estimator also available on the website, so you're able to calculate that from home if you want to kind of see what your bill will look like. And of course, you can always call our customer service center during regular business hours at 951-674-3146. We'll be happy to assist you with any questions that you might have. And so with that, I'd like to see if you have any questions that we can assist you with or help help tonight.
Are there any questions?
I know this would never happen in Canyon Lake, but in fact, somebody had six people in the house, but they report to the Water District, they only have two people. How, maybe I missed it.
So if you if you report to the district, the amount, we don't, we don't police that, we ask you to report to us the number of people in the household. The flip side is, your your sewer bill would go down, but then your water use would go up, and you might go out of budget, because your water allocation, as we described here, your water allocation for two persons is now just four and a half units. When you had four, you get nine units of water. If you tell us you have six, then you'll receive 13 and a half units of water. So it will, it will impact you on the water side.
One more, I say, eight waters. Okay, thank you.
Right. Yes.
Let's say, in some given month, I, you know, if you have one person in the house, and in any one given month, maybe my grandchildren come to visit for two weeks or something, and of course, there's a lot more, you know, you go over that water budget, is it restricted? Is it extremely high, or is it?
So if you go, do you want?
Basically, you would go into the higher tiers. So on your bill, and not the snapshot that we have today unfortunately, but on your bill, it does have the per unit rate in each of the tiers. So if you were to go over your water budget for a given month, your bill will show you that detailed amount, it'll just go right into that next tier. So that's just something that you can look at. But as Bonnie said, we encourage everyone to call customer service. We can actually look through your bills, look through your history, and then make a recommendation for you as to what would better suit you in terms of what you report. Again, we always would like accurate reporting, but we do understand that things do change throughout the year.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to 5.4, the added item.
Right, so we'll start with the Sheriff's Department, Lieutenant Huskey.
Good evening, Council, members of the community. I'm Lieutenant Raymond Huskey with the Canyon Lake Police Department. I want to cover a couple topics tonight, the first being a summary of our police activity for the month of April. During the month of April, the Canyon Lake Police Department responded to 380 calls for service, which was up six calls from March. And during the month of April, there were four Part I crimes, which are the high level persons or property crimes. In April, the Police Department took two vandalism reports and made three public intoxication arrests, and took, or I'm sorry, wrote 13 traffic citations, made two DUIs, and took three traffic collision reports. Last month, you may recall, and some people may have not been here, Canyon Lake resident Samantha, a young lady with a new family and a 10-month-old, came in to describe an incident that occurred at the roadway inn on Wednesday evening about 6 o'clock, a week before our council meeting last month. And she and her husband and the 10-month-old were leaving in a vehicle when a subject who appeared to have been partying or hanging with some people at the roadway inn on the balcony at the back approached their vehicle, made some comments that weren't discernible, and then reached in to try to take the keys out of the ignition. The husband pushed the subject away, drove away, she was able to call 911 but had to give the phone to her husband, she was too upset and scared. Canyon Lake Police did respond, they gave a very good description of this individual. We identified, located, and arrested him for public intoxication. He's a 22-year-old male, Canyon Lake resident from within the lake itself, had no prior criminal history, so he went to jail for the public intoxication. Now, I was asked to research and identify calls for service at the roadway inn over the last year. And over the last year, Canyon Lake Police Department has responded to 37 calls for service, and I'll break that down for you. Eight of those calls were 911 calls. If an individual calls 911 from a room in the roadway inn, it identifies the roadway inn, not the room number, and there's no way for the clerk, according to the information we received, to say who it was that called. Those were hang-ups, those 8 911 calls. Five of the calls were either medical, follow-up, or found property, nothing of major significance. 20 were actual disturbance or crime calls, and in that year, we only had to take four reports. One report was for an arrest warrant service, one was for a domestic violence, one was for a stolen vehicle recovery, and one was for a vandalism. In the last month, I've also gone down to the roadway inn, I've identified the owner, actually spoke to him, Nick Patel, he gave me some information. I directed my deputies to deploy there over the last month and do activity checks. They arrived unannounced over 38 times last month, just to keep an eye on the place and for high visibility. Mr. Patel told me that he has owned the hotel since 2003, he's owned it for 15 years. Over the last year, he's made some improvements, there've been 13 cameras put in with almost a month's worth of hard drive capacity, so if something occurs and we don't hear about it for a while, at least we have almost a month of time to retrieve that information. Lighting has been upgraded, they have policies there where they won't rent anyone who doesn't provide ID. Now, that doesn't prevent somebody with ID renting and then handing the keys over to someone else. So I believe, oh, and we also consider the roadway inn to be what we call law enforcement community friendly. They provide us with assistance whenever we go down there for investigations. They don't put up a block wall, they help us as much as they possibly can. So that's the information I have, and I'm open for questions if Council has any.
No, I do appreciate the follow-up, though, and the extra patrols, is it, I'm not familiar with statistics, and what is usual, was this a high number?
Not necessarily. The way the roadway inn is situated, as you all know, is it's next to Pepe's, next to other locations, so the calls that I pulled up may have been associated to one of the others, it's just that's the address that was used by a deputy when he arrived, other than the one specifically calling to that area. But when you look at four reports at a hotel that has 34-something rooms, that's not bad.
Okay.
Not not to me, and not the type of calls that we actually responded to.
Okay, good, good, that's good news. Any other questions? All righty, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
And so now, we'll have, I will have Chief Preberton give a synopsis of the incident on Old Wrangler this week.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Council. Today I'm going to give you a brief incident update on the Wrangler incident that happened. There we go. June 4th, at 3:07 PM or AM, that was our initial dispatch of fire units. It was a 29-235 Old Wrangler road. The initial units that were dispatched was one battalion chief, three fire engines, and a ladder truck out of the Rosetta Canyon Station. Typically, if we have a report of, and can confirm it with either additional reports or active fire from the initial 911 caller, we will upgrade to two additional engines, we call that a working fire response, so that we make sure that we have the 15 number of firefighters on scene to actively not only fight the fire, but meet the requirement to also perform rescue. So at 0313, Engine 60 arrived at scene, the Canyon Lake engine. Captain Carter was on duty that morning and reported a three-story, single-family dwelling, and he had fire through the roof of the garage. If you're not familiar with this particular residence, it's got a garage at street level, and there's pictures of it in the next couple slides, and then it's got one story above that sits behind the garage and one story below on the side of the hill. Residents, when he arrived, were evacuating. The engineer that drove the engine was also catching the hydrant, while Captain Carter did a 360 or a walk-around of the the building to also capture utilities and make it as safe as we possibly could before we enter. With the residents evacuating, they were not allowed, because they only have the two members of the fire department there at this time, to be able to enter that hazardous environment. At 0315, the responding battalion chief based upon, who is here with us tonight, has their specific questions about the incident. Jeremy Schneider, he's Battalion 3119, requested two additional engine companies and a breathing support unit, and that fills out our requirement of 15 firefighters on the scene, and also gives us the ability to recharge the breathing air that the firefighters have to go inside of an IDLH atmosphere. At 0319, Engine 5 and Engine 94 had arrived at scene. Captain Carter passed the interior command of the operations portion of the fire attack to the interior, one of the reasons why we do that. If it was a single-family dwelling, like we see up in Audi Murphy Ranch, where it's a flat lot, not on a slope, those aren't as complicated as ones, our homes here that are in Canyon Lake that are built on the slope. These were very fortunate, there was no high winds that night, but when we have a home that's built on a slope that's got stories below, it adds significant amount of risk and complexity to the incident. The the home's living space was approximately 4,000 square feet, plus the garage, I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood of over 5,000 square total feet of the home. At 0341, we did have a firefighter injured from one of the engines out of Lake Elsinore, and he was transported by hospital to AMR, he's fine and recovering, but will probably be off for a month or so. So on the left of the screen, this is taken by Chief Schneider as the firefighters are beginning to suppress the fire in the garage. You can notice, not only on the left, but in the picture in the right, the, they had a partial roof collapse when we started to burn the tresses, or the wood structure underneath the the ceiling. The weight of those tiles tend to come down pretty quickly, so our timeframe to get in there and suppress that fire before that happens is very, very minimal. One thing fortunate, again, about this fire is that that garage is set off of the house, so you can see that silhouette of the roof line on the house, where the roof is actually separated and fallen in. In that space, we had several voids and a man door that's a half-door that the homeowner at one point in time had opened up, and the heat that was sent down that door through the portion of the house melted everything in the the master bedroom. Didn't cause any additional damage other than that heat, but everything that was plastic melted. But the good news is, there was no actual fire in there. So you can see the firefighters there on the roof, chasing other hotspots that were actually on the, what would be the third story from from the very bottom. Getting to the third story was actually very difficult, and the firefighters had to ladder on the backside, and then place another ladder on, I believe it was, and Jeremy can correct me, I'm wrong, we're on on a balcony to be able to get on the roof, not our most optimum way to get to a roof, but definitely needed to make sure that we got all the hotspots out. So the successes, we believe that having the regional integrated cooperative fire protection allowed us to muster enough firefighters to be able to keep this fire confined to the garage with minimal damage to the living space. The responding engines that had municipal staffing and the additional folks, a lot for the proper supervision and rotation of the crews during a very complex incident, like I said and explained. The house is on a hill, provides a lot more risk for firefighters, but fortunately, we were very successful in the firefight. The damage, the fire damage specifically was confined, majority of it was to the garage, it was a four-wide garage, so it was a pretty large space with a lot of, a lot of stuff in there, and as you see in, let me go back. And as you see in, let me go back. We did save this classic truck, the golf cart, and another vehicle that's not in the picture from the garage. Majority of the house and the belongings inside were saved. Our estimated save is in the neighborhood of $450,000. We're not estimators, we're guesstimators, so that's our best guesstimate. Some of the challenges, again, as I had said, it was a three-story structure with two floors above grade and one below, heavy fire volume in a large four-car garage, fire in large void spaces between the garage and the house, which is pretty common. And if you're not aware, typically, a house has separated the living space from the garage by a drywall. They call it a firewall. The most you typically get out of it is 20 minutes. So it held, it did its job with minor damage to the living space. Again, having only the staffing on that first two fire engine slowed our aggressive attack of that fire down, but with the other units that we had respond absolutely, we were able to hold it to the garage. And the other challenge, obviously, is the injury to a firefighter. We don't want to see anybody get hurt, let alone one of our members that are trying to save property. And we're also guesstimating the total loss is $500,000. The total resources that were assigned were two battalion chiefs. One of those ended up going to the hospital to follow up and do the supervision responsibility of the paperwork for skiff. Seven fire engines, two ladder trucks. Again, the breathing support unit and AMR ambulance. Total of 31 firefighters responded in the first alarm. Those first four units were there within 17 minutes. That's a pretty good, pretty good time for the first alarm assignment. Total commitment to the incident overall, not all resources, but most resources was seven hours. And I would like to also thank the other communities that provided assistance, obviously Cal Fire, Riverside County Fire, Menifee, Lake Elsinore. And you probably are asking yourselves, why the city of Temecula? Because I did the same thing when our battalion chief created this. The Temecula engine was moving up. That's one thing we do when we have a working fire, is move resources up to cover the void areas. They were actually closer because they were moving up, so they didn't come necessarily from Temecula. So we believe that while this was a challenging incident, we were met with a lot of fire upon our arrival, and we can find and save the majority of the belongings and the structure. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
I'd like to ask a question. Good job, by the way. I'm sure those people are very happy.
I actually met with the homeowner this morning, and he did say that he was very happy with the firefighters. Obviously, he was very devastated from his loss, but he was safe, his wife was safe, and the majority of his belongings.
Yeah. I was curious, there was a backup call for a reoccurring event at that house. Could you talk about that?
So we did get called back out when I believe it was ServPro came out. And this house has blown-in insulation. And blown-in insulation is a firefighter's nightmare, is really what it is. Because depending upon the age, it also could have had asbestos in it, but I don't believe the age of this home, it probably did. There was a small little spot in that blown-in insulation that was smoldering, so they called us back out, and we extinguished it. That was the extent of the second response.
Is that something that if they had been there and caught it, could have reignited the fire?
Absolutely. Whenever there's a fire that's unattended, it can reignite and spread. Typically, that doesn't happen in that blown-in insulation. It's designed, and the way it's manufactured, it's not designed to carry the fire flame, but it would certainly smolder for a while.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, very good.
Thanks, chief. Cause and origin?
So we've eliminated a lot of things but cannot clearly define the cause. We know that it's not criminal in nature and have left the final decision to be made by the insurance company. Captain Carter's working on his preliminary report, and that should be done in seven days.
Was that a metal truss? Was that a metal truss that I see?
No, it was a wood-framed truss.
Wood-framed truss?
Yes.
Did you guys have to open up the attic on this two-story apartment?
I'm going to defer that to the incident commander. I was in Orange County on the Elisa fire, so.
Good evening. So to answer your question on, I'm not sure if we go back, go back a slide. So on the actual, which would be the third story, the main house roof, the truck company out of the Rosetta Canyon Station cut, I believe, four holes, different holes, as the fire chased up the wall and got into the main attic. That was the only damage in the actual interior of the structure when it got in. It basically burned from the exterior wall from where the garage burned into the attic, and there's three or four different void spaces that have like half firewall in the attic that you couldn't see fire behind it. So we had to, as you can see where the firefighters are standing on the roof, there is multiple holes on that roof that we had to cut to get access to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Excellent job, guys. Six minutes, fabulous. Okay, and it's time for public comments.
Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. Completed forms to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the City Council. The City Council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you are commenting on the agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time that a particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note if you're addressing the City Council items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the City Council may only do the following. For further matter to staff, ask for additional information or request a report back or give a very limited factual response.
Do we have public speakers?
Yes.
Joe? Kamashia?
Kamashia, but that was really close.
I don't care, right? Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here with John Kegwin, fellow member of the men's golf club, and we're here to, I've actually had some flyers out for the city golf championship, which is something we'd like to put in effect. We have eight scheduled through the golf course, and we're real excited about it. It's going to be an event where we solicit golfers of all levels, primarily really good golfers from the area around Canyon Lake, not specifically in Canyon Lake, but areas around Canyon Lake, to come and experience our golf course, experience our community, and compete for the city championship. So we would like the city's support, both, you know, primarily, we'd like your city's support so we can call it a city championship. That's really important. And we would also like to utilize the city's resources to help promote it. And we would, might as well ask for some money while we're here.
We knew that was going to happen.
And request.
That's in five minutes.
And request funds to help provide a really good experience for people coming to Canyon Lake to play in the tournament. So, do you want to add anything?
I don't know that we'll have a lot of discussion about this. We, this is a recurring thing, right? This happened years ago, correct?
It did happen years ago, and I think about five years ago, we started it and kind of been on hiatus. And, you know, I got the idea, well, let's see if we can run it again. So I went to the men's club, went to the family club, went to the women's club, and we've been at POA, and now we come to the City Council.
So at this point, is this something we need to put on the agenda to decide if this is going to do?
Yeah, it's something that the council would like. I think the best thing to do is we could put it on for the July meeting for discussion and possible action with the council.
When is your event, October?
October 6 and 7.
Okay.
Is that right?
Absolutely.
Is that right before the course closes?
The last weekend before the course closes.
Oh, perfect. And what's the, is there some recent, some charity that you're donating to, or does this just go into?
No, this is not a fundraiser. This is a city championship. This is just a event to attract outside golfers to Canyon Lake, compete for the city championship trophy. And it's both going to have a men's champion and a women's champion, as well as other levels of play will be rewarded as well.
Also, it could bring interest into joining the club.
Exactly. That's why Eric at POA was excited about supporting us. We met with him earlier today, so we have their support.
Randy, you have a question?
Yeah, Joe, I noticed in the announcement this week on the beautification tournament, they're going to recognize that people hit from different tees based on age or handicap or what have you. Is there any possibility that this tournament could be recognized it? Because if it's from the blue tees, I just can't automate, they cannot play.
Oh, yeah. There's going to be different flights, so if it's a matter of, and we'll work with Pat on that, and if it's a matter of, you know, different A, B, C, D, you know, play from different, you know, it doesn't have to be. If you want to play in the championship, the big trophy, you're the city champ, that's going to be from, you know, the back tees. But the other flights definitely will, can be from whatever tees can be decided.
Thank you.
So this is something that we need, we don't need another presentation, though, we'll just?
No, we'll do, we'll put it on the agenda if you'd like to attend the next council meeting. So when they have discussion, if they have questions, they can direct them towards you.
And by that time, money was briefly mentioned, but by that time, maybe you'll have an idea of what kind of money we're talking.
Well, I can reach for the cards now, or I can talk to you later.
Well, let's get, you know, let's get some different levels going and see what we can do. But we'll talk about that in July. We'll put it on the July agenda, and that'll help.
Is this the?
I have a question.
Hang on, is this turn?
Oh, sorry.
So you're going to reach out, excuse me, to other cities? Is this a city championship amongst the cities here in Western Riverside County, or?
No, this would be a City of Canyon Lake championship event, golf event for the champions, Canyon Lake, City of Canyon Lake. We just want to draw people to that. And typically, cities have a city championship that attracts golfers from outside areas, so that's what we're hoping we can do as well.
So if it's an outside golfer, they're going to be awarded the city championship?
Correct. If they happen to have the lowest score.
Is there going to be any opportunity to have any tees, a head of the green tees?
We can have the Jordan tees if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Larry, you have a question?
Is this the existing trophy?
Yes, it is. It is the existing trophy.
So take a look, what they do is they put a placard on who wins it for the year.
Right.
It's a pretty cool trophy.
And I got to tell you, it's about this big, and it weighs about 25 pounds.
And it was donated by Pat Campbell when he was with the SEGA. It's actually a former SEGA trophy.
Yeah, I think it would be a plus for us, so.
Well, and the other thing that we do want to do is, you see on the flyer, I was able to capture a four-quality version of your logo, city logo, and obviously, we have that.
Yeah, we'd like to.
We can improve that, yeah.
That's not a final flyer, by the way.
No, I had mentioned, absolutely. Okay, well, we will revisit this. Did you have another question?
I do. We're working on the flyer, obviously, and we want to work on the publicity, and we have POA helping us with that. To complete that, we need approval and a copy of your city logo. And I don't know if that's something that can be done tonight or not.
Maybe somebody who wouldn't want us to use it, but we just can't do that until we have it on the agenda, so you'd have to wait till the beginning of July.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have other public comments?
No other public comments.
Okay. We're on to the consent calendar?
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous City Council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion with the concurrence of the City Council. A City Council member may request that that item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
I make a motion for approval.
First, I have to ask if anybody wants to be polled. So if you, hold on for just a sec. Does anybody have anything they'd like polled? All right, then we have a first and a second. Can I get a vote?
Councilmember Bonner?
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty? Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Motion approved by zero.
Okay. All right, we've done our motion and so forth. You move right on down the line. Number nine, schedule of future events. We have many listed also on our website, and if anybody has anything that they'd like to add, we'll make sure that we get things put up on that page as well. Number 10, business items. 10.1, consideration and possible adoption of city budget. You're up?
No possibility.
Your honorable mayor, members of City Council, glad to be here. Go through quickly. I've kind of changed the slides a little bit, so it should be a lot quicker. And so if you want to get started, here we go. So what I did was, this is the general fund revenue detail, kind of rolled up into categories. You can see our biggest one is the utility user tax, and that's about 21% of our revenues, followed by property taxes, which is just under 17, fire structure fee, 20, and then the VLF swap, which is 18. And those are the majority of our revenues. So we're predicting for 18, 19, just a little over $5 million. I think that's our first budget for the general fund, over $5 million, so that's good news. Any questions on the revenues? And then this is our summary by type, and you can see in the pie chart, our big four revenues. And, you know, one-fifth of our budget is the utility users' tax, so it's very important to the city. Fire structure fee, which is limited to fire, which, you know, we have more than enough expenses to cover that cost, so that's good. Here's the general fund expenditures by department, and you can see we're at the grand total of 5.5 million, and public safety I have down there is up to almost 75% of our budget. Any questions on these expenses?
Just let that sink in for a minute. 75% of our budget goes to public safety.
We've gone from 68 to 70 and 75.
And growing.
And growing, yes. And then here's the general fund expenditure by function, and so you can see just the pie chart where it shows how much is public safety. But just the presentation before us, we see how important it all is. And then here's the revenue summary for all the other funds. We have gas tax, which is, and Measure A, which are limited to street-related projects. And then we have the AQMD trust fund, which we purchased a new vehicle this current fiscal year. And then the AQ, then the law enforcement grants, that is money we get from the state through the county that goes towards our law enforcement. And then those are, we're running out of funds here, so that's good. Here's the expenditure summary for all the funds. As you can see, like, the gas tax drops quite a bit, and that's because the slurry sill project was in there last year, and it's not there. On the gas tax fund, we underestimated the, which one of those?
The trees plenty?
Yeah. So we would like to add an extra $1,000 to the gas tax budget as part of the motion because we missed it by a thousand, so. And then here is estimated fund balance beginning in the year for the general fund. I have $3,008,000. I think it'll be closer to $3,009,000, so, but pretty close. And then we'll end the year with 3.3 million, and we're going to use about $575,000 of reserves this year, so. And all the other funds are healthy and in good shape, so. And here's the change for each department. So overall, our expenditures are up 15.5%, fires up 53%, and that's due to the three-person in companies. And then every other department other than building and safety. And that building and safety, that 42% increase is due to the revenues were raised quite a bit, and then the company that does it gets 67%. So when we raise the revenues, their fee goes up, that's why it's 42%. Emergency preparedness, just budgeting a little different this year, and then the grants aren't in there. Animal control dropped because of our percentage of animals to the overall lower. Public works went down because of... Public works went down because the company that helps us now has caught up. Now we're just in the maintenance mode. There's a large decrease in special enforcement. And then finance, the decrease there is due to the fee studies not included. Any questions on any of those changes?
Terry?
Yeah.
If we didn't have such a large increase in fire, would we have a surplus? And if so, how much?
I don't remember exactly, but I think it was like just on record. And then here is public safety costs. You guys asked to see it for the last few years. And so up through 16, 17, those are actual numbers, and 17, 18, and 18, 19 are based on the budgets. And so you can see fire, our police, we had one large increase from 13, 14, 14, 15. And then 17, 18, one of the 8%, but the current year is only 4.5. And fire, fire's kind of tricky because we had $1,446, and then it dropped a little. And then 14, 15, it dropped again. And then that's the year we, that was the year before the fire contract ended. 15, 16, we only had fire protection services for nine months. And then 16, 17, we shared with Manife and Lake Elsinore. And then 17, 18, we opened the station again. That's why that cost is up. And then that increase, which we saw on the previous page, was about a 57% increase. Any questions on these? And animal control's kind of up and down depending on the count. So we keep our dogs. And then this is the attorney cost. They'd asked some questions. 14, 15, a lot of legal bills that year due to the fire contract. I left all the other firms out that we used. I just had Betsy's firm. And so every year, we kind of do a major budget adjustment for that. So we're not terribly far off the budget other than 14, 15, and that was all due to the fire.
And just for councils, so that they're aware, so for this year, we've had, we've had a couple of code enforcement cases that were quite extensive use of the city attorney, which hopefully on one of them, we will get back just about all the money that they've spent on that. And we've also had a significant amount of public records requests. So that's what's, that's what's attributed to the costs over the last couple of years.
And included in that 77.5, which is through March, is those costs appearing as described?
Right, which, which once, as we've talked about that, we'll be able, if that case is finalized here in the next few months, we'll be able to recoup those costs.
Any questions on any of the costs? Here's our major revenue sources without the U U T. And I kind of wanted to show you the last six or seven years and the growth. Sales tax is kind of all over the place, but I think we're going to see about a 2% to 4% increase going forward. Property taxes, 13, 14, 14, 15, for people that have their properties lowered during the recession, and they started coming back on, and that's why you see the large increases, because they were bringing them back up because they could go more than the 1%. And so that, but I think it's going to settle down to about a 3% or 4% future. Fire structure fee is based on the same thing, assessed valuation. The V L F is based also on the assessed valuation, so that's kind of, you can see that those big years were jumped, and then now it's more of a realistic. And then the franchise fees, those are really consistent year to year, not a lot of change. So you can see with the, with the police and the fire going up 4% to 5%, and the revenues growing 2% to 4%, it's tough to catch up, so. Any questions on these revenues? Here's one that we saw at the workshop. And so the first one is with the U U Ts where we're at right now. And you can see at the end of fiscal year 16, 17, we had a general fund fund balance of just under $4 million. And if we did not have the U U T at that same time, we would have been at $1,702. That's about a 2.2 million, $300,000 difference. And then this is the budgets, the first ones with the U U T, and the second ones without the U U T. And you can see the fund balance is much better shape with it. And then 18, 19, we, general fund goes negative, so. And then here's a five-year projection with the U U T at 3.95%. And so you can see we're going negative, and by '23, '24, without any, you know, specific changes, then we'll go negative. And so for the sheriff and the fire, I raise those 4% a year, which is conservative. Revenues, I did 2%. And most of the other expenses, 1% to 3% depending on the growth. Any questions on the projection? And then here's the same projection with the U U T running out. And you can see we're negative at fiscal year '21, '22. And then just at that point, it's, yeah. Any questions? And that's it.
Are there any questions? When was a successful workshop then that we had?
We just have, we just have one thing that the council that needs to, we brought up salaries, different steps we're going to do. We'll have Terry go through that again and see which way the council would like us to enact those.
So what we gave to you was salaries remain the same as prior year. And then I think I gave you one with no increase, one with everybody getting a step or a merit increase, and then one with no merit increase but raising the steps for inflation. And then I have a fourth one to hand it out, step, step, hand it out. And that's a step increase plus the steps increased for inflation. And then April to April, April 17 to April 18, growth was 4%. And so I used 3%, which is a little below that, so. And so that last one she handed out, that's the largest one. That's about an $18,000 increase in salaries and a $1,500 increase in benefits for a total additional $18,412 in salaries. And that's the more costly of the three. So we would like to put something in place, maybe bring a new policy back later where we adjust the steps for inflation every year using like an April to April and then, you know, making it effective sometime in July or August. And that way, there's some consistency with how we're doing for the employees.
Can that, if that was put in place, could that be amended at any point?
Council could amend it anytime they would like.
Yep. Are there any questions on this?
Did you look at the classifications? Is there a compression between each one or is there enough spread?
There's, there's enough spread between, between the steps.
So are you talking on percentage, it would be for each step? We say three, whatever the number.
I use three. We could use whatever.
3%. So each step, A through E, would be increased 3%.
Yes.
3%.
Okay. And the steps, I think, are four and a half apart.
So I believe so, so I think it's just under five, yes.
Yeah.
Four and a half, five.
All right. And so I just adjusted every step by 3%. And then, so.
So wherever, wherever step they're in, they would see?
An increase.
An increase. And then if they got a step raise because it was time, you'd also see that.
Yes.
Okay. And that's the second thing that I gave you.
The step raise is still a merit?
That's correct. It's based on performance.
Basically, what you just gave us is, would be a combination of both.
If they got the merit. Right, so let's just say they didn't get the merit, but the current step that they would be at would go up 3%.
Right.
Okay.
So what you, what you do some places is we budget the higher. That's not always what gets paid, but it's in there in case it does. So if they don't get the merit.
Yeah, I would rather not see an automatic step increase based on, but I'd like to see the steps increased stay at step and not just move somebody up because per se, they're going to be top step.
Right.
So I'd just like to see each of the steps increased a percentage, whatever that is.
And then just wait for evaluations and then recommendations for Aaron to move.
Correct, that's an incentive to do a good job.
That's, that's where I go.
So what we could do then is just if we budgeted, it doesn't mean it's going to get paid out.
That's correct.
But we just don't have to come back for a budget adjustment.
Correct.
That's right.
So which, which option was that?
That would be the last option that you discussed. So it would be raising the steps 3% and everybody getting a merit increase.
A possible.
Possible merit increase.
Correct.
With a possible merit increase.
Okay. I just want to clarify that so that everybody out there understands.
It's performance-based. It's not seniority-based.
Right, right, and it's not automatic?
No.
Right.
Yeah, if you do bad work, you get promoted.
Right. Okay. I do have a public comment. Yeah, we're going to have a public comment.
Yeah, we have a public comment on the budget.
Travis Montgomery?
Travis Montgomery, 23849 Canyon Lake Drive, Canyon Lake. I just wanted to comment on the previous item. The sheriff talked about the roadway end, and I've noticed on the golf course several times around 10:00 AM when I'm on the ninth hole, a sheriff's car patrolling that parking lot. So it is being done. In fact, I've kind of wondered to myself, because I've seen them there so many times, gee, what's going on down here? Why is the sheriff here so often? So I think that's great. Couple of comments on the budget. First relating to the, the fire part. I hope everybody heard what was said earlier, that they were not able to respond to any fire suppression because they were a two-man company. And that had to have been a three-man company, fire suppression because it could have started sooner. So we think about that as we look to go into a three-man issue. That also means that back in the time when we had Station 60 closed, the initial responding units would have been able to start fire suppression right away. For two-thirds of Canyon Lake, we get three people initially. Probably every home representative on the city council will have three people if there was a fire at their home tonight. It's only the portion that Station 60 responds to that only gets two, so.
Right, well, basically, and councilmember Green can respond to this as well. Typical structure fires, response is three-engine minimum is the standard, correct? And so you'll get the initial one on scene, which obviously by having Safe and 60 open will be on scene in most of the late faster than it would be if it was coming from Manife or Lake Elsinore. And by having them, they, as, as we heard, Captain Carter went around, walked around and planned for the I C. And by the time he had his plan in place, the other engine showed up, which is typical fire response command.
Yeah, and here in Riverside County, because of their 3-0, it requires three additional units above the three that were responding. Excuse me. But as of July 1, Station 60 is staffed 3-0.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying that, that's one of the benefits that we're going to get. It's going to cost us more, but we're going to have a little better efficiency. When Station 5 responds to my house, there's three, there's three firefighters there right away. And they can respond to that fire differently than when they respond over on the other side of Canyon Lake right now with the two. So it may not be so bad that we're having to have some increased costs here because we're getting a lot better response out of, out of that happening. And that's what it's all about is fire safety. Second item is, and it just came up as you were talking, but you might consider tying your step increases and things to those kinds of increases that a lot of your constituents that are, are subjected to. We don't get social security increases every year. They're not automatic. They don't come in and tie it to something like when there's a social security increase, we'll look at step increases for our people or some other kind of a common denominator other than just kind of to, okay, it's a new year, let's, let's raise the steps because there was inflation at this much this year. A lot of things don't increase just because of inflation. Your biggest expense, your house, doesn't go up every year because you signed a 20- or 30-year lease con, or financing contract in, so. The other item, the real reason that I had here and what I wanted to talk about, though, was in the city manager's letter, he, he stated, decreased public works administration department budget by $50,000 as the city's completed several much-needed projects. Should just be routine, routine maintenance going forward. I really, I talked to the council several months ago and called to your attention Railroad Canyon Boulevard Road, and we've just completed, it says here's almost $600,000 worth of repair. There are literally hundreds of little sprinkler heads that are watering daily with zero plants. All you have to do is drive up and down the center, and you see those little black things sticking up with wet spots beneath them. And literally hundreds, I can't count them in the traffic that much, but I can get up to a couple of hundred without any effort. So that, and then the side ones where all of the hoses are, are all exposed. And so I do think, I don't think that's probably just routine. That's going to be a good expenditure. So I call that item, you're decreasing the public works budget because there's only going to be routine, but.
You can't. Unfortunately, you ate every time on.
Okay, that's fine. If you like, and I'd like to respond.
I would like to, I would respond to the, to the medium and to the exposed pipes. Both of those are in process. We had to wait till the road was finished. There are, we do know there are bare spots. We want to make sure that the irrigation systems work. We are going to remulch the side. That's already in a plan. It doesn't require an engineer to do that, so we, but we have those steps, including, depending on the savings that we have, the fence repairs that we have on Nine and across. So I knew that was probably going to come, but just because I said on the finance committee.
Well, as long as the funding's there, because it says they were decreasing that budget by 50-some thousand dollars. Right, that, that was a general fund decrease. And so the mulch, which was already approved by the council, we pushed that back because of, because of the slurry seal, that was, that comes out of gas tax. Anything having to do with the medium or whatever, we have a very healthy gas tax reserve, which is beneficial for us. And so, and so also, yes, Mr. Borah has been working with our maintenance contractor. He was actually out there walking the last couple of weeks without his safety vest, and we'll talk about that later. But, but yes, he's been out there. They've done, they, they plan on addressing all of those issues that you brought up. And the additional $1,000 that they asked for to be put into that budget is because of the estimate, the financials we got back from our landscape contractor. It was $1,000 less than we, than we initially went through the budget workshop.
Good, well, I'm glad to hear that's moving ahead. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this? Any discussion with council? Okay, so we need a motion?
Motion to approve the 17, 18 budget.
I second. Hold it.
18, 19 would be with the additional?
$1,000 for, for, for landscape maintenance and?
The additional $19,412 for staff increases.
Have, but I don't know that everybody has decided that's what, can that be separate? Does that have to all be one?
No.
We haven't had a chance to.
Well, that's what I mean, so I would hold up. Yeah, you hold up on the motion. I wouldn't doubt the budget until you discuss that, and that would be part of our motion.
Okay, any discussion in the council as to the possible staff salary increases? We want to go up, adjust automatically for inflation and then?
And if I can make a commentary, when was the last time we adjusted the steps for inflation?
Not that I'm aware of.
This, I know the first time I've stopped here, it's been almost three years, so I know it hasn't been done.
I'm inclined to go the three on each step with, with the understanding it's performance-based.
Absolutely.
Not automatic?
No, it's not automatic.
Okay, so now can we get a motion?
I make a motion.
And incorporates all of that, stuff that you have, everything that we need to incorporate? Can I get a second?
I'll be, I'll take a second to motion.
Now we need a roll call.
Councilmember Bonner?
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Yes.
And Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Motion approved to pass the 2018, 2019 budget with the increase of $1,000 to the gas tax budget. budget and a $19,412 increase for the step increase. Staff salaries.
I'd just like to comment saying that staff and the finance committee and everybody involved in this budget process really did a great job. It was quite easy this year, which we had a couple of dollars to work with, and certainly we hope in the future we'll have that same amount of money to work with. But I just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work on the budget.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, 10.2, discussion and possible action regarding AB 1405.
Mayor, members of the council, council member Bonner attended a meeting, and I'll let him jump in here in just a minute, about AB 1405, which has to do with, I believe, digital billboards and a public-private partnership between Caltrans, State of California, and possible private developers who would want to be putting up digital billboards on state lands. So I'll turn it over to council member Bonner.
Okay, I'm the representative for RCTC, Riverside County Transportation Commission, and we had a person that came forward to the commission, and he's a businessperson. And apparently, there's a Sunday member, I think San Francisco, but up north anyway, that wants to put a bill forward which will allow that any signs, like let's say we had any of our businesses in town center, they want to advertise on 15 or 215. It has to be approved by Caltrans. Now, Caltrans is in that advertising business, but that's the way it's trying to do. And then also, if this thing gets approved, they get the revenue, not the city. So he just, he feels it's not fair, it's not right as a businessperson, and he would like to have us to be opposed to this, a letter opposing their assembly bill.
Are there any other comments on this?
Just a question, is the league behind this, League of Cities?
As of right now, they have not taken a position.
Has RCTC taken a position?
Yeah, Randy, has RCTC taken a position on this?
No, they left it up to the cities, individual cities.
But at this time, no, it's, I believe it's still just on their watch list right now. They have not taken, the league has not taken a position.
Right.
Is there anything to clarify? I haven't, haven't come to a conclusion yet. Are there any other comments on this?
Oh, I would just comment that it's another Big Brother's watching you situation, and another way of taking away at our rights and privileges, and I would urge anybody to support action to defeat it.
Well, I'm reading, I'm reading the recommended course of action, and right at the very top it says it would be Stone and Melendez to contact first, and let them carry it to the floor, I guess. And then it says to the league, and lobbyist, we don't have lobbyists.
I think, yeah, I think they mean the league lobbyist, and so what I can do is check, you know, if the council takes any action this evening, then I'll check with our league rep, Erin Sassy, and see what recommended course the league would like from us. We can go ahead and authorize a letter or something like that and get it to Erin, but I'll talk to her and see what she recommends for us to do that.
Can the city write a letter to a settlement, Kevin Lo?
Oh, yes, and I think that's what would be, I think probably if there was a recommended action, it would be a council or signed by the mayor, asking for them to, you know, for them not to support.
And then individual contacts to your senator or settlement.
Right, so that would be, that would be Senator Melendez or Senator Stone.
And the recommended course of, recommendation course of action is on page 141.
That seems more aimed at individuals rather than as a.
Is that information that they hold back?
It's online, it's part of, it's part of the agenda.
I think we have a public comment here.
I'm relatively familiar with this topic, having been involved in it for several years, years ago with Keep America Beautiful and other programs. During Lyndon Johnson's presidency, in fact, his wife had a campaign going to limit signage on major federal highways, and this is on state highways and federal highways. It would not directly affect the city of Canyon Lake. It doesn't apply to freeways such as we're talking in, as the councilman was saying on 215. I would recommend that you wait and see what some of the transportation people who are really involved in this decide to do. Caltrans issue in this, rather than being Big Brother necessarily, is highway safety and the kinds of signage that's along major freeways that attracts people's attention and things like that, that could have negative impacts. And so it does have an interest of Caltrans in what happens on the freeway. Much the same as there was a concern by the city council here when the sign went up at Pepe's, on how bright that sign could be, how large that sign could be, things like that, that didn't distract public driving by and cause safety issues. And the same issue holds true then on freeways. So I would recommend that you sit back a little bit and see what guidance you get out of RCTC and some of the other people who are directly affected by transportation issues, and then go, because it's not going to affect our city directly. We would have no involvement in it if, as described, and I did read a little bit of it on the internet, read the one, that those pages when I was scanning through the budget. So that would be, or the agenda, so that'd be just a thought for you.
But Travis, that's not exactly right, because let's say Pepe's wanted to have a sign down there, and they come up River Canyon Road and they have dinner, and Caltrans are going to be, make those decisions. And it doesn't make sense that we aren't allowed to do what, as a city, for our city, you know, for our city.
That would, the sign wouldn't be in our city, so we really wouldn't have any say on it.
No, but if it's on a highway, Caltrans has to approve it.
That's correct, and that's a safety issue that they don't want, they may not want a huge sign there, and RCTC may want to have some input to that. I won't argue with you. I'm just saying I think that's some of the issues behind this, is highway safety. It's not just a matter of controlling where signs and things are, and I think that you might want to sit back and see what some of the people who are specializing in that do. Just my thoughts.
Okay, and the votes, it's going to be in June next, no, this month, I don't know the exact date, but if we sit back, it may be already passed.
They didn't mention safety, they mentioned revenue when they were in the bill. They get revenue, so I think there's more to it.
Is, is that interpretation correct? That's not how I had read it, that we would be so limited?
I think the problem is competition, that if the state enters into partnership with private companies for these billboards, which will also give them a state public forum on these, then in fact, it will be difficult for others to compete. So it is a form of at least limited control. And I have to say, the bill is, it's a gut and replace bill, which means it's a little sneaky, maybe? So I think it's worth watching at a minimum. And I think it's certainly worth bringing up to the league. It may just be they've got so much other stuff going on that they haven't put it on the list.
Okay, so it looks like we've got two choices, either act on it now or act on it after a little further advice from the lobbyists that we pay for, RCTC that we're members of. So it looks like those are the two choices. What does the council wish?
Contact the league, find out what their position is, and push it through that way.
We would need to say that depending on what their issue is, if they're going to support advocating defeating it, then we should at this time authorize our city manager and attorney to write the letter, appropriate letters, depending on what they say.
Right, so if, so we look at, so council member Green's suggestion is contact the league, and if they're going to at least oppose it, if not fight it, then the staff will draft, will draft a letter in opposition of this bill for the mayor's signature. That's what council member Green says. What's the rest of the council think of that option?
I think that caps it.
This is what I just said.
So everybody, everybody's, you're fine with that.
And my name's not Green.
Okay, so then we do it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody aye?
I didn't know we needed to turn the mics on.
I need a motion in a second. Oh, wait, I thought we did that, sorry. You're right. I need a motion in a second.
I mean, the motion.
Second. Okay, now all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Okay, they passed. 10.3, discussion and possible action regarding status as a sanctuary city, SB 54.
I'll turn this one over to the city attorney.
And I will turn this over to Sunny, who's done the research and can give you the background on this before you have what is essentially a political discussion.
Hi, I'm Sunny, everyone. So regarding SB 54, effective January 1 of this year, California became a sanctuary state. And since then, a lot of cities have taken actions to oppose, a lot of cities have decided to stay neutral. But in terms of the cities that have taken action to oppose, there have been some consequences. Specifically, the first city to publicly come out and pass an anti-sanctuary resolution was the city of Los Alamos, and they actually, actually were subsequently sued by the ACLU. So now they started GoFundMe to raise money to defend that lawsuit. The potential, the, what happens if the city publicly opposes is it exposes itself to liability. And so it's up to the city here today to decide what to do, but ultimately, because the city of Canyon Lake does not have its own police department, it's mostly a political decision.
What was the lesson you said?
Because the city of Canyon Lake doesn't have its own police department, the city's decision will mostly be a political and symbolic decision.
Okay. Okay, a question, Los Alamos is a charter city, aren't they?
Yes.
So their rules and laws are a little bit different than a general law city.
Yes.
Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So I guess, I guess because we're general law, we're going against state statute.
Yes.
Let me add a suggestion. As we looked at this, if you wish to take a stand on this, that certainly is your right, but let me suggest that you put it in the context of a way in which you are empowered to act. We've seen a whole bunch of opposition letters, like Ducaita's letter is good, it says we oppose it, but opposing it isn't going to do you any good. What you really want to do is say, okay, do something about it. I don't honestly think that'll happen, but the request to be amended, reconsider it, repeal it, you're putting us in a bad position. And that's a completely legitimate action for you to take. And that's, because you can't just say, I oppose it, and not take the next step and say, okay, now fix it.
I think that's an excellent, excellent suggestion, and I think we should do it. I think just because we don't have a police force doesn't mean that people in Canyon Lake go, travel all around, and we are impacted by those who could cause us a danger in other areas. And people could come into the city that we really would rather not be here because of that. So I think it could impact us even though we are a little bit of paradise. And I think that stating that we do not oppose, that we oppose the idea and that we would suggest that they amend it or change it or do something with it is a very good idea. But at least it shows that we support the other cities. The ACLU has just filed a one suit, it was obviously a nuisance threat to discourage other cities. I doubt very much the ACLU would file a lawsuit against Canyon Lake, nor have they with any of the other cities. And I think a letter opposing them and suggesting they fix the problem and telling them the reasons why is something that we should do.
And it looks like, Aaron, Larry?
So quickly, I have Lieutenant Heskey here from the Sheriff's Department. Since we are a contract city, we do not have our own police force, nor do we have custody. We do not have jails and reporting like that. Lieutenant Heskey can speak to the county's position and how they handle it.
Please.
As far as the Sheriff's Department's position, since we are under the sheriff's jurisdiction and he gives us the authority to conduct our police powers, our sheriff, as of June 1, has come out to say that he will continue with the law as mandated. SB 54 requires that we do specific things under the sanctuary laws, and that would be not notify ICE of releasing inmates, but the Sheriff's Department does publicly allow anyone to check our inmate system for whether a person is in custody or out of custody. That's open to everyone. So you can tell if someone's inside or outside, you just have to check their name. The sheriff did publicly oppose the bill, but SB 54 was passed, and that's the position we're in. Since we, we being the Canyon Lake police officers or employed by the Sheriff's Department, our policies and procedures are what's mandated by the sheriff, and at this time, it is to follow SB 54, sanctuary state law.
Larry, you want to start?
Yes, I was reading that cities that have filed a resolution, looks like some of them at the bottom here aren't charters or general law cities, but Spence, Stern, Mills. But then what's interesting is I wrote, read here, Upland voted to file a brief in support of Huntington Beach's lawsuit. What does that actually mean?
So the city of Huntington Beach actually was the first to file a lawsuit against California for passing that sanctuary law, and so Upland has voted to file a friend of the, an amicus brief in support of that lawsuit.
If I read this, all these cities, Newport, San Juan, at least I'll be able, all have filed amicus briefs?
All of them have voted to publicly oppose SB 54, but not all of them have filed amicus briefs in support of the Attorney General's lawsuit against California.
So if we put a letter that we as the city of Canyon Lake oppose SB 54 when it stands for, but do not file a brief, what does it, what does that put us?
So that puts us in a good position because we're publicly stating that position, but we're not exposing the city to any liability in getting involved in litigation. And so we have prepared a draft letter that unfortunately, we don't have a copy tonight, but within, but we think it adequately, you know, states the city's position and also states or describes kind of the difficult position that the police department, our police department is put in because of this law.
Thank you. Jordan?
Well, yes, I think our sheriff has answered part of what I was going to say, but really what this boils down to is that you're going to obey the law as it stands now, and then we're going to allow others to break the law, then is that because we can't report what they're doing? They can break the law, but we can't turn them in. We being you. Yes.
What does 54 actually do?
Yeah, pretty much, yes.
Without taking a position on the bill itself. Without taking a position on the bill itself, it is very specific on what we can and cannot do. Very violent criminals, regardless of their residence status, are not, are, they're, they're not protected. They still get arrested, get charged, and turned over to ICE. There are specific people who may not be at a higher, at, at as high a threat level as decided by the state bill, where we cannot let them know that we're releasing them. In fact, we won't even know what their residency is, we don't ask that question. So, yes, if, if you pass whatever decision you pass, we are still mandated by our sheriff's rules and policies, and that is, at this time, to follow the sanctuary bill.
So if we were to agree that we wanted you to round up some people that were violent criminals, you couldn't do that?
Oh, violent criminals? Show me where they're at.
Well, I, I don't know how, how to describe, you're going to have a chart of various offenses. This person can, this person can't.
No, they can still be arrested for violating the law. It's whether or not we can turn them over to immigration or ICE that changes. It doesn't mean they're, that it's a king's ex, that they don't get in trouble. They still get arrested. We still continue to do what we've been doing, regardless of the residency. It's what happens after, or when they're being released, that changes. That's it.
So once you detain them, that's as far as you could go, then?
Correct, on a nonviolent, low-level crime. Correct.
But the state needs to discuss a nonviolent, maybe a whole.
Correct, there is a list, and that's very specific.
Ian, I don't necessarily agree with the state on what that level is. Many people.
No.
And I understand that, yes.
Yes.
Absolutely, just going to ask, does this create a, obviously, this got to create an unusual relationship with you and your federal partners.
Yes, it does. We still have a very close relationship with them, it's just what we can and cannot share with them at this time.
Okay.
And you can't give them a desk.
That's right.
So I would like to say something. First of all, we had a couple, excuse me, a couple of our citizens wrote to us on this issue, sharing the same thing that, that we've all shared, and the way we feel about this. It's a difficult decision, it's, it's not even the liability that is so scary, but I don't like doing anything that has no real meaning to it. I'm so sorry. And that's been the reluctance, that if you're going to do something that has, that it's all for a show, I, while I can understand doing something because it makes you feel better, that's basically what people have been asking us to do, I don't care, just do it because it looks good. However, this, this new option that has come up is not that. These amicus briefs also are, are to me, basically a motion of show. It's not, the, the word is that the judge isn't even reading any of the new briefs, because they all say the same thing. The form letters that are going, those are all the same thing. Anybody who stands up and rails against the wind for blowing, they're not going to get anywhere. The option that we've had, presented to us tonight, is an actual positive step. And if that's the direction the citizens would like the city to take, of making a step, not just showing our opposition of it and crying at the wind blowing, but to actually say, "We want you to do something about that," to me, this is a better solution. This is just my opinion, I don't like doing empty gestures, I think this has a little more meat to it.
I would like to comment that I agree with you, that this has meat, the way we finalized our discussion. But when a bad law is passed, if everybody says, "Well, I can't really do anything about it, so I just won't say anything," the more people that stand up and say, "This is a bad law, and it's hurting us," if enough people do that, it is effective. If you sit on your duff and do nothing, you deserve what you get, that's democracy. And I don't think it's, it's whining at the wind, another phrase, but I won't use it. I, I think that in showing our support, the more people that show their support, the more impressive it will be to those who voted for the law. And every time somebody backs the defiance of that law, or suggests that it be changed, I think it gives us more power.
I agree, I just like this, this additional fight.
We have two speaker cards on this issue.
Okay.
Jack Momsley?
With reference to the sanctuary, SB 54, I would hope that you would vote to really go after this thing, and let you, let the people know how you stand. First of all, I think it's against the federal, the federal law, and that is in court now, as I understand, maybe Elizabeth can let us know where they are on it. I understand the feds have filed against the state that this is an illegal approach. Yeah, is there any, is there any gain in that yet?
No, nothing.
Nothing, okay. But I think any support that you can give the federal government, with reference to doing the same thing that Huntington Beach is doing, and let them know that, hey, you people are on line, and let them know that we just don't care for that kind of a sanctuary law. But if you don't say anything, now you got people sitting down there wondering, well, wonder what the people think. So let them know what you think, we don't want them, and go after them. That's my opinion.
Dorothy Washell?
Well, as you know, I don't come to many of these meetings, and I felt tonight that I needed to present a different perspective, so here I am to just share my thoughts. We all agree that the United States must screen immigrants and enforce limits. We do not have limitless ability to help all seeking a better life in our country. However, those already here, for the most part, are a very important part of our economy. Just as an aside, you know, they fired all the maids in Las Vegas, they're sending a lot of them home, and all these people were coming in, and their rooms weren't ready, and so on, so it, it does affect the economy. Their contributions are valuable. I would just like to state that many of our illegal immigrants contribute to our society. They, for the most part, are hardworking and supply the labor for many of the jobs in our country. I would like to recommend compassion and respect for people who are seeking a decent life for themselves and their families. I strongly feel tearing immigrant families apart is unnecessary and inhumane. I felt in conscience that I needed to speak up tonight to present my view, one of human concern and compassion for the citizens of one world under God. What statement are we trying to make by raising the issue of being or not being a sanctuary city? Thank you.
Any other comments? Discussion by council? Do we have a motion, direction? We'd want anybody to do anything?
I would like to move that the council agreed to have our city attorney write a letter representing the city's objection to the law as it stands, and suggesting changes be made that would be more beneficial to the people, our city, and of the state.
Can I get a second?
Can I ask a question?
I have a comment.
Okay, we have to. Turn, go, go ahead, turn.
Well, I would just support what Don has said, and I think that we, we should send a letter to anyone and everyone who's concerned about this. So many cities are doing that now. It doesn't mean that we're not nice people, it just means that we have a position that we would like to take, and it's supporting of, well, there's enough people that are supporting it now, or attempting to support it, an amicus brief would be probably proper, but just a letter would do just as well. So, that's what I, I have two cents, three cents. Is that a second? Do you have a second?
Not yet. We'll come in.
Also, I'd like to comment on the last speaker. We understand what you're saying. I don't think any of us are that cold-hearted to understand that we do have a large immigration population here, and our country was founded on immigrants. But we also have laws that are in place that regulate certain things, and immigration happens to be one of them. And there are people that are caught in the middle for various reasons. That isn't what we're addressing. I think what we're addressing here is, this particular item has handcuffed our law enforcement folks in certain ways that would normally take guys that you don't want on the streets, that you don't want in our country, because they are not the best citizens, and get them in the proper places where they belong. And I think that's what we're saying. We can't handcuff everyone because of one particular segment of the population we're working on. So with that, that's just what I wanted to say. And I feel the same as you do, because there are contributing people. But I also feel we cannot lock our law enforcement folks up and their partners in the federal side to help us manage our criminal population.
That was very well said. I could have provided more.
I might, I'd like to point out one other thing. One of the gentleman, it wasn't a gentleman, one of the illegal immigrants who was released five times for various crimes that he committed, is the one that murdered the young girl in San Francisco. There are about, oh, there's, it's well over a hundred now, murders that have been documented by illegals that have been arrested and released, and then committed crimes. We're not talking about the families, hardworking families, we're talking about the criminals. And if they're arrested, and they have a record, they shouldn't be turned back into society.
Okay, we have it first, do we have a second?
First.
All right, motion, make a motion, and the letter be written.
Don, Don already made the motion.
Don already did, okay, second.
So he's obviously seconding. Yeah, roll call because it takes.
Councilmember Bonner?
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Green?
Yes.
And Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Motion, approved, five zero.
So, once the city attorney has the draft letter, she'll send it to me, and I will send it out to the council for any comments, which will be tomorrow. Yeah, so you'll have a copy of the letter tomorrow.
We go on to number eleven, city manager comments?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Recently, we just did a slurry seal of our entire section of Railroad Canyon, and bringing our PCI index back up to a hundred, so we'll get, hopefully, we'll get to that twenty-five, thirty-year road life before we have to reconstruct the road. It looks great. We'd like to thank the public for their tolerance for, this is one of the fastest slurry seals I've seen in my career, it took them three days. And so, you know, and that's one end of Canyon Lake to the other, so it was great, so we appreciate their tolerance for us in that, that's all done. There's just, I think, a little bit of restriping left to do, I think there's only some crosswalks, but everything else has been done, it looks great. The potholes eastbound in the number one lane going up by the church are no longer. And we're hoping by doing these treatments every five years, that we get an extended road life out of it. And like I said, we budgeted about $530,000, it came in, project management, everything, it cost us about $350,000.
And that's because you have a city here, if not, you'd have Elsinore's roadways, you know what that's like, it's a great map.
And, and to also let the public know, I've been speaking with, like, Elsinore, probably within the next two months, they will be starting on their section of Railroad Canyon, so I guess from, from Canyon Hills all the way down to the fifteen, be prepared for some serious construction. They will be widening it to three lanes on both sides, and redoing everything, just like we saw, we'll probably see, probably even more, worse construction conditions as we saw in the beginning last summer. So be prepared for that, that will be coming.
Councilmember comments? Randy Bonner?
Well, our city manager took the first subject, I was talking about the slurry project, so it's well done, and it's ragged well. It didn't take all that long, I think there was only two days were really a problem with driving, being, well, from the town center, from the main gate, but that was minor, and we appreciate the good work. This is something we've been talking about in the finance committee, Larry and I, for some time, and the amount that came down is going to allow us also to do the fence, as you come down the ninth green to the town, so that's going to be done. And I think Joey, you're going to be happy about that part.
I've heard that.
All right, the Fire, Railroad Canyon interchange at fifteen has been fully funded now, so it'll be, the design will be finalized in 2019, and at latest, and they're going to try to have it all done by 2020, 21. So it's really important, if you ever been going south on fifteen, and get, or tried to get off Railroad Canyon, it's, you can be a mile down the road, down the freeway, so it's, it's really important, and we've been talking about it for some time. We had the emergency preparedness, I think the president of emergency preparedness is going to talk about that, but I just, we had such great cooperation between the city and the POA, community patrol, law enforcement, and of course, the committee. And Sue and I were bitten, victims, so we, we rescued, but it was great. This last week, myself, the mayor, and Jordan, went to the Celebration of Life at Sun City for Mayor Winter, and Mayor Winter is quite a, quite a person, I got to know him very well, starting last year at the annual Legal California Cities, and he's on the RCTC, and he's been working hard to get ninety-two-five, or zip code ninety-five-eight-seven, say, look like Canyon Lake. So we've got great effort, and, and, well, we're going to miss Mayor Winter. And finally, and I know the mayor mentioned it, but just for emphasis, the July meeting is July tenth, and we're also going to move the public safety and the finance to the Tuesday for the ninth. And the reason for that is right tied into the July fourth.
It'll be Tuesday, the tenth, the, I'm sorry, Tuesday is July tenth, and the council meeting is Wednesday, the eleventh.
Ah, all right, thank you for correcting. And that's it.
Jordan, Aaron, please?
Yes, well, I attended two budget meetings, and here for the city, and three budget meetings for Vector, and I'm sure nobody wants to hear anything about any of those particularly, so I'm going to skip over those. I do have three or four pages here of the usual diseases, but Travis, you don't look like you're interested, you're the only one here. I'll leave it here as I usually do. One event that I went to, which I hadn't attended before, was the first for me, I think it was the fifth for Senator Jeff Stone, had an annual veteran's service award to five deserving veterans from Southwest County. And these veterans not only served our country, but they continue to serve our communities, and they just volunteered for so many different things. There was one fellow that I was quite impressed with, I think he was either a general or a colonel in the Marines, he was eighty-seven years old, his uniform fit him like the day that he joined the service, I think. He was in the first, the Second World War, when the Korean War broke out, he was activated again for that, then he went to Vietnam, then he, he served in some other capacity, he served a total of thirty-two years in the Marine Corps. And I think thirty, or, Randy, you may know better than I do, thirty or thirty-one is all that you're allowed to serve.
Well, was he a colonel? Was he a colonel?
I believe so, yes.
Thirty years.
But now he repairs wheelchairs and motorizes them, and gives them to all the needy veterans that, I say all, all that he can accommodate. He was just one of five others, but he just stood out, so I'm not going to describe the others necessarily. But that was, that was a, well, it was really an impressive evening that I certainly enjoyed. And of course, I- And of course, I think we all know, we went to Fiesta Days this year. It was great, as it always was, and always has been, I should say. Yesterday, I was at WR COG and we set a record. The meeting concluded in about 35 minutes. There was, I can't, I can't, I can't tell you what we talked about because I think several of the candidates running for office were not there yesterday. And that was just part of the reason why it was kind of sparsely. But it gave me a chance to hang around, talk to some of the people afterwards. Aaron and I were supposed to have a meeting with Rick Bishop at 4:00 yesterday afternoon. But I had to call him and tell him there's no stuff coming down here because we're done for the day. And I think that's probably most of the activity that I had this past month. Oh, just a reminder, the, well, you all know, the General Assembly for WR COG is the 21st of June. And I'm not sure how many council members are attending. But the guest speaker there is Steve Forbes, I believe it is. So it should be quite interesting. So those that are coming, I hope you enjoy it. End of my report, thank you.
Councilmember Hagerty?
Okay. I have some really interesting, I hope I don't bore you, but I thought this was really interesting information from our, the RTA agency meeting and budget meeting. I'll try and scan through some of this quickly. They have improved their bus service, increased the hours. They've added new routes. And they've added a rapid link service which has very few stops for commuters. And of course, they added the Disneyland bus, which has a capacity, the buses are standing room only. And they're thinking about adding more buses, or maybe even two-tier buses because there's so many people going to Disneyland on them. A lot of travel infrastructure's been added, new bus stops, signs, mobility hubs. They're building a moving hub in Hemet and one in Temecula. This is the information I thought was interesting. Riverside County is among the largest in the nation for a transit system. It includes 2,500 square miles of Western Riverside County. And the boundaries are from Banning Beaumont all the way to Norco, Paris, Riverside, Oldhamar, our whole area, as well as the unincorporated areas. So RTA is unique in providing service for both urban and rural areas. They also connect with LA, Long Beach, Anaheim, and San Diego's bus routes. So they're very efficient. A market assessment and analysis identified the following. The 2015 population of Western Riverside is projected to reach 2.7 million or a 28% increase from the, this is by 20, the 2020 projection. The highest growth rate is projected in the current suburban areas, but also growth in the densely populated transit-supported urban communities. Employment is projected to grow by 34%, bringing employment to over 1 million jobs. Employment is projected to grow mostly in the suburban areas. Hemet, San Yuceno, and Pass sub-area, which is Banning Beaumont, Calamase, is expected to have the highest rate of growth. Hemet currently has about 80,000 people and is projected to grow to 127,000 by 2014. That's a 58% increase. Mount San Yuceno College has a student population of 5,000 and that's projected to grow to 10.6 by 2020 in the southwest sub-area, which includes Canyon Lake, French Valley, Lake Elsinore, and so forth. The highest growth in jobs is expected to concentrate in Marietta, Long Island, I-25 and 215. Temecula and Marietta are projected to have the highest density in the sub-area. I thought those were interesting facts. It quite surprised me at how, what the expectation is for job growth and for population growth. Just as an aside, RTA provides American Disabilities Act services. And these ADR people are eligible for trips through RCA service. Anything within three quarters of a mile of fixed route bus service, they will come and pick them up and take them to the bus, pick them up for the bus and take them home. This is for senior and disabled service. And for those in rural areas where bus service is limited, RTA will provide taxi service to seniors and those with disabilities for such things as doctor appointments, dialysis, chemo, trips to the pharmacy or the grocery store. And they also provide discounted fares for veterans. RTA is a very, very efficient, well-run, and impressive organization. And it's been my honor to work with them. They're just, they've done incredible job and are doing so in Riverside County.
I agree?
Well, we have a busy month. Did a couple of things. One, we did a foot city exercise earthquake. We activated the ELC, tried out our new equipment. I have to compliment Mike and both Darren. But Mike was able to get all the staff there and we didn't incur any overtime. We were able to work the schedule. So the hours that they were there worked out very well. We learned a lot of things. We've got some things we need to work on and improve. But overall, I think we met most of our goals. And obviously, there's things you always can find. We met yesterday and let everyone know that's out there in TV land. If we get notified that we have an extreme heat situation coming on, we have some folks, usually seniors and those who are in firm, that don't turn their air conditioners on when our temperature started getting hot because of the cost. And it's just a fact. And so we have met with the POA. And if we get notified that we have a heat emergencies declared, the senior center will be open. And it will be, there'll be signage that will let people know that it's open. And they can go in there and cool off if they so desire. We haven't had a real run on that yet. But this year, we wanted to formalize how it was gonna go down. So let's hopefully don't have to use it, but we have it in place. And the last, I gotta get a drink. Met, went with the RCA. We talked about different things going on. But one of the things I asked them is the signage for the BLM land. And they'll see if they can help us. That's all I got.
I don't have much. I do wanna mention that the city council has two open seats coming up for this election. First day to submit papers is in July. I think it's the 16th. Mid-July somewhere. Okay. The last day would be August 10th. So we do have the two openings coming up. I wanna say Fiesta Days was wonderful. Congratulations to the POA for putting on another successful event. Very fun, very nice, a great, the weather was perfect. It really showed off our community. That's why people wanna move here. But last, I would like to say, we lost somebody important to us, important to Menifee. Neil Winter was a politician, but he was not a politician. He was a person that listened to his constituents, loved his city, loved his citizens, was deeply involved. He had a wonderful family. He's missed on many, many levels. And he was a great loss to all of us who have known him and have worked. And I would just like to dedicate this meeting to our friend Neil Winter. And that's it. Our next meeting is July 11th, 6:30. We're adjourned.